It is now seven o'clock. I will call the February 25th, 2021 special town council meeting to order. And as usual, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all. And we will start off, as usual, with public comment. We do our public comment in the world of Zoom in two phases. The first will be the town clerk reading all the correspondence we received prior to the meeting. And the second will allow any attendees of this meeting the opportunity to speak. Paul, have we had anyone send in messages?
We have no messages sent in ahead of time.
Okay, none ahead of time. We will move to the second phase. And if you have an interest in speaking, please raise your hand. When you are called upon, state your name and address. And if you would please limit your comments to five minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we're going to start off with Marcus Fairbrother.
Hi, everyone. Marcus Fairbrother, 12 Candlewood Lane. I would just like to encourage the council to clearly decouple the 1928 building from the FHS project. I know that you were doing that, but what I would encourage you to do is clearly communicate with the public that these are, in fact, two separate projects, that the 1928 building's future is separate from the proposed new FHS, so that there's no, excuse me, there's no confusion during the referendum process, that when people go to vote, they know that the 1928 building is separate from the high school. And I would also encourage the council to to act definitively and decisively on the 1928 building and not to defer it for a couple of years, also to try to help prevent any confusion about the future of the project and and also that, you know, to clearly communicate that it is, in fact, very separate from the, from the high school project.
Very good. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our first order of business, D1.
I make a motion that the town council discuss and give direction on the future of the 1928 high school building.
Go, Captain Farrell, second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Kathy?
So, just, I thought I could start off and that at the February 16th meeting, as you know, there was some discussion regarding adding a town council ad hoc committee to review the options. And that option, that was tabled until tonight. So, a couple of things that are in your packet that I thought maybe we could talk about. The first is, there was, I think, some confusion and there was quite a few questions on the 900 wing versus the 1928 building for the central offices. And I summarized it in the packet for you, but one of the things is that I thought needed to be clearer is that the 900 wing is proposed to be renovated for the central offices in the locker rooms. The architects determined that the 900 wing meets the space needs of the central office, and it costs less to renovate the 900 wing, approximately $6 million, than to renovate the 1928 wing. Another factor was that the reimbursement for the renovation of the 900 wing seems to be more favorable than the renovation reimbursement for the renovation of the 1928 building. The proposed use of the 900 wing instead of the 1928 building was the result of a competitive design process that allowed us to meet the educational needs at the best value. So, again, there was going, we were going back and forth a little bit about 900 wing versus the 1928 building. And really, again, in summary, is that it was, it's just less money to renovate the 900 wing. And that's one of the reasons why it was picked. The second thing is, I thought that we could have some clarity, and we talked about it a little bit, is that the students will continue to occupy the 1928 building for the next several years. Should the proposed high school building project pass at referendum, the 1928 building would continue to be occupied for its current use as classroom space until the demolition of the existing high school facility, which is tentatively scheduled to the summer of 2024. Therefore, it may not be necessary to include the 1928 building as a separate referendum question in early June. So, I just put a couple of points, maybe to guide the discussion, and, and if you could put that on the screen, is that the 19, you know, the 1928 building is a landmark in our community, has sentimental value for many residents. Both the town and the community have space needs, but the town has not thoroughly examined the cost to meet those needs. Further analysis could conclude that there are more economical solutions to meet our space needs as older buildings are costly to renovate. That said, the fact that we have a potentially vacant iconic building that could be available for our use in the near future warrants further discussion. Deferring the decision and not taking any action on the 1928 building will provide the town with more time to study the options, demolish, mothball, or renovate. Additional time will allow the town to complete a formal needs assessment, and deferment would provide ample time for public participation and input. Overall, again, there does not seem to be a downside for deferring the decision and not including the 1928 building as a separate question on the Farmington High School referendum. So, I thought maybe just throw that out there. That's kind of what I gathered from some of the discussion we had at the last meeting. But again, this is, you know, up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So, I think the point here is to look into this possibility of separating the 1928 building since, first of all, unless and until a referendum passes, that 1928 building will remain as it is, and it may remain as it is in all perpetuity, depending on the town's decision. But right now, we're just talking about, and I hope we'll focus our questions on the benefits or disadvantages to separating the two. So, I'll open it up for conversation. If you have any questions, council, just raise your hand.
Actually, I just have a quick question for Paula. Do we need to vote on the discussion? Is that the motion? That we have a discussion? Or what are we voting? Is there a vote on the motion?
No, you did not vote to have the discussion. I question whether you even should be motioning on that, but by your prior practice, yes, you need to vote to have the discussion.
That's what I thought.
Okay, very good catch, Brian. Then we'll vote on whether we're having a discussion, if that's the direction we're going in. All in favor of having a discussion? Opposed? Okay, we're on to discussions. Questions and comments now. Chris, is that your hand up?
Yes, it is. Thank you, CJ. Chris Fagan. I would direct this towards Richard and for the benefit of, you know, the community. Maybe, Richard, if you can discuss the, you know, the, how it architecturally, structurally, and sort of a programmatic needs, how does this 1928 building play into the schematic design and the construction process? Just get some further clarity around that for us.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Richard Sebak. I'm an architect with TSPB Studio, working with the FHS Building Committee on the FHS project. So, when we looked at the 1928 building, we looked at how we could possibly incorporate it into the footprint of the building. And one of the options that we looked at, I think it was option number two, was additions and renovations to the high school. And we realized that the cost associated with that was not significantly less than a new building. But it added a complication, which is phasing of construction. Best scenario for the high school project is to build a new building that is at some distance away from the footprint of the existing high school. You could build a new building safely. You could keep the operations going in the high school until the new building is completed. When it came time then to reconsider whether the 1928 building could be used, we realized that a fair amount of work needed to be incorporated into the 1928 restoration and renovation in order to make it habitable. And at that point, it was at some distance away from the main new building that we had designed. So, what purpose would the 1928 building have at such a distance? It's about 30,000 square feet, three stories. And the conclusion we came to that of all of the footprint of the existing high school, the 900 wing was the one that was most useful, because it was most recently added to the complex. It could be very easily renovated. It's only one story. And at that location, it could serve not only central office, but also could serve as the locker rooms for the fieldhouse. So, when we took all of those items into consideration, our recommendation was the 1928 building is not required to satisfy the educational program that is in the educational specifications. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. No, thank you very much, Richard.
Other questions? Okay, there you go, Peter.
Hi, Peter Masturbatista. Yeah, I, I'm a, I really believe that this, that the 1928 building and the new building should be totally separate potential referendum questions, or at least the 1928 building should be something totally separate from this, just so there's no confusion in the public of, of what they're getting, and one doesn't have an effect on the other. So, I'm, I'm totally in favor of pulling this off. I don't want to say off, but out of the buildings, building committee's plate right now. So, I'm very in favor of doing that. And I, just based on the outline that Kathy gave here, or the few suggestions, I'd be highly in favor of deferring the decision for a later time right now, so we can thoroughly examine this building and see what its potential uses for the town might be in the near future. That's all.
Thank you, Peter. Other questions, comments? Chris? Oh, Brian, I'll get to that. Let me go to Brian. I saw his hand up there.
No, just, I just wanted to follow up with Pete, Pete, that I, I agree with you as well, Peter, but there was a comment that we're kind of kicking this down the road, and I really don't think we're kicking it down the road. What I think we're doing, because we only have a couple of years to decide what to do, but as you said, really giving not just ourselves, but the town, the opportunity to tell us, do they want the building? Why do they want the building? Are they willing to invest in the building, or what would they like to see the building do? And I like the fact that we get to engage the town in this decision as well. And I did add just one question for Richard, just for clarification, and that is, I know that we would, I think it would be taking the cost of demolition, obviously, out of the cost of the high school. Would you bring the cost down a little bit? But if down the road after a referendum, should the town decide that they wanted to keep the building in some capacity, then we would have to, those costs could be, would not be included in the town, but there would be a whole separate line item at some point down the road for what we would be doing, correct? Unless we were going to, you know, raise the building for whatever reason, if people decided they didn't want it at all. To be determined, of course.
So, let me see if I can paraphrase the question.
Thank you.
You're asking if we can separate the 1928 building from the new building, which we certainly can, that's easy to do, and whether it can be, and whether its renovation could be added at a subsequent date?
Well, not that. I'm sorry, my question, just to clarify, because I did not say, explain clearly, is if we decide to raise the building, do those costs get rolled into the building? And because we do have a cost for that already, we kind of know what that cost would be. But that would be an additional cost. And that would have to be voted on.
Richard, Richard, I'll, I can jump in on that if you don't mind. Brian, any cost for the 1928 building would be separate and distinct from the high school building project. And as a matter of fact, even if it were a demolition cost, the cost of demolition is such that it would have to go to the public for the final decision on that, unless it were put in part of an annual budget, in which case it would still go to the public for their decision. So, the public has the final say on any additional cost for that building.
Thank you. That was the clarification I was looking for. Perfect.
Other questions? And?
Thank you, CJ. Just more of a comment. Just listened to kind of the conversation and kind of what Richard's saying, what everybody else has been saying about the 1928 and the project. I think it makes sense to decouple the 1928 building from the new high school project. I think it kind of gets confusing putting both of them together. And more importantly, I think we also want to do our due diligence with the process to go through the decision, you know, that the town will ultimately make with the historic 1928 building. And kind of rather than kind of rushing through that right now to get to the, a June referendum, I think it makes sense to defer it for now, get through the referendum for the new school from the building project. And, and to your point, take the, the demolition and abatement of the 1928 building completely out of the new building project. So, it's completely decoupled, completely separate. And then, after the referendum, then we can begin the process of exploring what to do with the 1928 building.
Good point. Other questions? Chris, I see your hand up.
Okay, okay, sure. This is directed to Kathy, and Kathy, I don't know if you can answer this, and this is more of a logistical, practical question, I guess. Blonsky, Blonsky, I'm sorry. Obviously, we work with bond counsel in phrasing a referendum question, and I want to make sure that the public is clear if we are going to separate these projects, and there's no confusion, you know, everybody's speaking about, you know, doing this, and the confusion. How do we make that clear? And I'm sure you can't answer without speaking with bound counsel, but who would draft the question, but, you know, I'm concerned that we educate the public, you know, and be transparent about what is actually on the referendum. Have we given thought to how that is going to work out logistically or practically?
Um, I think that's a good point. And on the next slide, you'll see, one of the things is about communication. But I do think that we're going to need to definitely talk to the bond counsel, and I don't know if we, if we can put it on the question or when we give out information and things like that, but I, your point is well taken. About how we have to do this, to make it clear. For to come.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, other questions, comments? Brian, go ahead.
Yes, one other comment that I thought was an important point that came up during our last conversation when Ira was presenting, and I asked, you know, what happens when you have multiple questions on a referendum? And his point was, is in most cases, and not every case, but in most cases, both fail. So, I think by separating the school project and making that a unique question for the public to consider, and then separating out the 1928 building so they can focus on the options and choices there, I think we're giving the town a clear choice and something to focus on. So, it's, it's clear what we're voting on for each of these issues. I think that is a, a smart way to move forward for the, for the public's benefit and for ours.
Good. Thank you, Brian. Peter?
This is more towards, for the building committee. Is there still a active subcommittee? I think there was one for communication and getting the word out to the general public. Do we, is that still an active part of the building committee?
Yes, this is Meg Barrera, the chair of the building committee. There absolutely is. It is actually the, the largest portion of work we're doing currently. So, now that we have come off of pause and we have re-engaged all our partners and stakeholders, and we're coming to some of these decisions, which are really defining the project appropriately, the costs and the overall timeline, that is our priority at this moment, is communication at all levels, to all people, to, in any way that we can. So, we have an active subcommittee. Obviously, having Ira as part of our team was part of that strategy as well. So, you will see that be our main priority moving forward.
And then, just to follow up, you could use all your resources to get the word out. If we take the 1928 off the agenda or off the, off the ballot and, and just use your resources, correct?
Correct, yeah. I think this is probably, you know, should be a unified effort. Sounds like it certainly is going to be, but we certainly will play a major part in that communication and clarification. You know, really, in all our newsletters, this is something we identify on the website and our Q and As. We are going to be launching a large campaign around Zoom public meetings for people to be able to get information, and we can certainly work this topic into one of those meetings as a focus. So, we will absolutely do everything we can to make sure this is crystal clear to everybody that these are separate. And then, again, the more people saying it at the BOE level, town council level, as many people as we have, you know, really echoing that is, is always helpful.
Thank you, Meg.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
And CJ and Meg, obviously, our staff, and I know we are right here with the building committee to communicate, but obviously, on the town's part, we will partner as we have that, you know, any type of communication that goes out separately from the building committee. We could be more specific on the town side, too, and we can work together, whatever that message is, you know, once we all work with you and your communication team.
Absolutely. As we heard from Ira last time, those newsletters make a big impact, both district and townwide. So, I think, you know, having real consistency in the messaging in those coordinated newsletters going out, I think, you know, will really be helpful.
Great.
Thank you. Joe?
Meg, one more question, please. Are you still communicating with the residents of the joint neighborhoods?
We had one meeting with the residents last April, where we did a, well, it was actually two. Our first didn't go successfully. We did, we were able to, to complete a second meeting with them after we had a discussion with TPZ to really talk about the site plan and the impacts. And that was a very successful meeting, but very shortly after that, the building committee went on pause. And really, our outreach in any way, shape, or form stopped because we really had no idea or, you know, if, you know, a couple of things. Would this have any impact on our current design or make any changes? And, you know, what's the timeline look like? So, we really suspended communication and did very minimal at that point. So, now we do understand that the neighborhoods and community members, especially those that are directly impacted by the building, are, we need to get back out in front of them and be working with them consistently. So, the answer is, we did have one meeting with them prior to going on pause. And now that we have re-engaged completely and have a full understanding of this project and all the details, we are ready to go back out and, and continue those conversations with them.
Thank you. And Richard, is there a way to try to mitigate some of the noise of two years of construction for those residents? Is there anything that we're not aware of that's going to come up that you can tell them about?
Well, what we can do is specify that the plantings and berm and fence that we had been talking about with neighbors along the eastern edge of the property be done first, to make sure that there is some acoustic and visual barrier in place before the major activity starts. So, we can certainly do that.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Okay, other questions from the council, comments? Okay, I'd just like to say, from my view and from the council, I think we've put ourselves in a very good financial situation as a town. We're in a much better situation than we were a few years past when this referendum did not succeed. We have been following a strict set of guidelines to continue down that path. And I think this council has done everything it can to keep us in the best situation, so the public can decide, is this the right thing to do right now? Universally, the public understands there is absolutely a need to address the problem. And we've gone through a building committee process, who came up with what seemed to be the best possible option, trying to be as financially concerned about this as we could be. So, looking right now to lessen any confusion involved in this project by separating the 1928 building, which obviously engenders a lot of passion throughout the community, because they are not the same question. It's not an either or. So, there is really no question to be answered about the 1928 building until there is a referendum decision on the high school. So, it, in my mind, makes all the sense in the world to separate the two, to put that off, not for any great amount of time, just to put it off, as has been mentioned earlier, so we have enough time to decide if the high school building passes, what would we then be doing with the 1928 building? And that will take some time to look into the different options. So, I think it should be one step at a time in my mind, but I'll, if anyone has any following questions, otherwise, I think we should look to making a motion to, for our next steps. Okay, hearing no comments. I think, and Paula, you helped me out here, should we just make a motion to direct, actually, what's on the screen right now, direct the building committee to remove the demolition, to regroup and establish a charge for the 1928 building if the high school referendum passes, and to ask the building committee to communicate that the 1928 will not be demolished as part of this project, and no action will be taken until after a referendum decision?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I will leave that. Peter, if you'd like to make that motion, I'll let you put in your words.
All right, let me give this a shot. I make a motion that the FH Building Committee remove the demolition of the 1928 building for the proposed project and scope, project scope. And upon a successful referendum, the town council should regroup and begin establishing a charge for the 1928 building.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second?
We have a motion, a second. Any comments? And I'll, I'll ask one question. Do we want to add that third bullet on here to recommend to the building committee? I don't think it's required, but it wouldn't be bad to have that in there.
Okay, well, I'll continue with my motion then. The FHS, the FHS Building Committee will communicate that the 1928 building is not being demolished as part of the project, that no action on the building will take place for a few years, since students will still occupy the building, and that the town council will establish a committee after a successful referendum to study the options for the 1928 building.
Second?
Okay, we have an amended motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you, folks. We would now move on to item E, which is new business, seeing none. F, executive session, we have none. And before adjournment, as always, I'll leave you with a quote. Tonight is, someone is sitting in the shade today because someone planted a tree a long time ago. Hopefully, we'll be planting a tree soon. That was from Warren Buffett. Item G, Peter?
I make a motion that we adjourn the February 25th, 2021 Farmington Town Council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
All right. Aye.
Closed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Thank you to the people who visit us, and thank you to Richard, Kathy, Mark. Eric, everyone else.
Thank you.
Council's going to hang on to get our pictures taken. Seven twenty-nine.
Beautiful.
Well done, gentlemen and ladies.
One, two, yeah, there's nine.
You can watch below deck, Joey.
CJ, I just need a little bit of a clarification. CJ, I just need a little bit of a clarification.
Yes.
When Peter initially made his motion, it was as a new motion, and then we called it an amendment. I think it should be an amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I think, I think it was an amendment to the motion, yeah.
Right, okay.
I knew I should have said that, damn it.
If you said that, I would have thrown something else at you, Peter.
Joey, sit up straight.
I would have made, I would have made a, I would have made a point of order. I would have tried to make some point of order to confuse you, CJ.
All right, everyone face the camera, face the camera, Joey, face the camera. And you're, yeah, all right, Paula, you look good, that's all that's important, ladies look good. Anna, you taking the picture, you telling us when?
Can't smile that long.
All right.
Uncomfortable.
Okay, smile.
Three, two, one.
Are we good?
We're good.
Take another one. Not going to be back again.
Peter, put your fingers in, you're like you did before.
Yeah, yeah.
Joe, look at the camera.
No.
Are we good? All right, we're good.
Okay.
All right, everyone. Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Have a good weekend.